Board meeting in order that the record reflected is Tuesday, May 18th, 2021 at 7:30 PM. The meeting is being conducted pursuant to the Governor Pritzker's disaster proclamation in Public Act 101-0640, which amends requirements of the Open Meetings Act due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Although remote attendance is an option for the board members, are all present, thus we do not need to confirm the audio. All the materials for this meeting are available on the village's website. We recommend the members and public follow the agenda as posted. Once I the chair of a list of public commenters, I will call on each person present at the meeting and afford them three minutes for their comment. Further time up to an additional three minutes may be granted by motion of the village board. The public was also provided the opportunity to submit a request until noon today by email at theclerksoffice@tinleypark.org or by placing the written request in the drop box at the village hall to participate publicly via a live telephone call at the relevant portion of the public meeting. And last, the public was provided the opportunity to submit written comments until noon today by emailing their public comments to theclerksoffice@tinleypark.org or by placing their written comment in the drop box at the village hall. Written comments will not be read aloud. And finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Before we continue, Pat Card, you want to say something?
Sure. Thanks, Mayor. Yesterday, the governor issued Executive Order 2021-10, COVID Order 79, which modified the COVID orders on mandatory mask requirements. So what we are following, and we encourage everybody to go to illinois.gov website and also the IDPH website to look at the new bridge phase order. And in synopsis, it allows people to remove their masks if they are vaccinated. If people still want to maintain their masks, you know, you can do so, but for the purpose of this meeting, people that have been vaccinated can remove their masks.
Thanks, Pat. At this time now, let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Trustee Brady.
Here.
Trustee Brennan.
Here.
Trustee Galante.
Here.
Trustee Mahoney.
Present.
Trustee Mueller.
Here.
Trustee Sullivan.
Present. Thank you.
Item number one, do we have a motion to consider approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Have a second?
A second.
Thank you.
Roll call for item number one, trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item number two, like to ask for a motion to consider approval of the minutes of the special ceremonial village board meeting held on May 3rd, 2021, and the regular village board meeting held on May 4th, 2021.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Bill.
Mike.
Trustee Mueller.
Trustee, a roll call for item number two, trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number three, Clerk Therian.
Like the board to consider proclaiming June 4th, 2021, as National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the Village of Tinley Park. Can I have a proclamation to read? Whereas, every day, more than 100 Americans are killed by gun violence alongside more than 230 who are shot and wounded. And on average, there are more than 13,000 gun homicides every year. And whereas, Americans are 25 times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in other high-income countries. And whereas, in Illinois, Illinois has 1,400 gun deaths every year with a rate of 11 deaths per 100,000 people. Illinois is the 36th highest rate of gun deaths in the U.S. And whereas, gun homicides and assaults are concentrated in cities with more than half of all firearm-related gun deaths in the nation occurring in 127 cities. And whereas, support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand-in-hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories. And whereas, mayors and law enforcement officers know their communities best, are the most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it, and are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe. And whereas, in January 2013, Hadiya Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at age 15. And on June 4th, 2021, to recognize the 24th birthday of Hadiya Pendleton, people across the United States will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange in tribute to Hadiya Pendleton and other victims of gun violence and the loved ones of those victims. And whereas, the idea was inspired by a group of Hadiya's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods, and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas, anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 4th, the first Friday in June in 2021, to help raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. And whereas, we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe. Now therefore be it resolved by the President and Board of Trustees of the Village of Tinley Park, Cook and Will Counties, Illinois, that the first Friday of June, June 4th, 2021, be designated as National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the Village of Tinley Park in recognition of the value of human life and violence prevention efforts. Approve this 18th day of May, 2021, signed by President Glotz, myself, and the village board. I'm told that Elizabeth and James Brown are here to accept this proclamation. Could you please come forward? Have your picture taken? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number four, trustee Brady.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like to have the board consider adopting Resolution 2021-R-038 commemorating the 20th anniversary of the sister city partnership between the Village of Tinley Park and the Town of Marlowe, Ireland. I have a proclamation to read.
Want me to second the motion?
Yeah. Go ahead. Trustee Mueller.
Okay. Whereas, the sister city concept was inaugurated in 1956 by President Dwight David Eisenhower in establishing friendship and understanding between the people of the United States and other nations. And whereas, the Town of Marlowe, Ireland has existed since the early times of the first millennium, with the area first developed by a point at the river Blackwater. And whereas, the Village of Tinley Park's history is a predominant settlement in a area beginning in the early 1830s near dense timberlands north and northeast from the area known as Bachelors and Cooper's Grove. And whereas, the sister cities of the Town of Marlowe, Ireland, and the Village of Tinley Park, United States of America, was established in 2001 for the express purpose of economic developments visited by governmental officials, historical, cultural, and educational exchanges. And whereas, in continuation of this partnership, the growth of both communities has helped with a willingness to work together for the purpose of creating mutual understanding and to assure a future of friendship, cooperation between these two communities. And whereas, both communities have relationships with other sister cities around the world. The Town of Marlowe, Ireland is also a sister city with current armor Britain, France. The Village of Tinley Park shares sister city relationships with Boogaden, Germany, and a town in Poland. Whereas, I knew better to try it. Whereas, the village marks the 20th anniversary of the sister city partnership between the two communities. Now, therefore be it resolved by the President and Board of Trustees of the Village of Tinley Park, on behalf of over its 57,000 citizens, the village hereby goes on record as commemorating and celebrating the 20th anniversary of the sister city partnership between Tinley Park, Illinois, USA, and Marlowe, Ireland. And the resolution shall take effect from this day after and after its adoption option approved on the 18th day of May, 2021. Signed by the President, Michael Glotz, our village clerk, and all of the trustees.
Thank you, Bill. We have members of the Sister Cities Commission here. You guys want to come down to accept it?
I wonder how he says it.
Anyone from the public here to comment?
Next, we'd like to receive presentation. Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call for item number four, trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Thanks. Motion carries. Item number five, Clerk Therian, do you want to take Herman's Auto Center?
Yes. We are pleased to have two presenters this evening. I'm introducing Herman's Auto Center. Herman's Auto Center is located at 7250 Du Van Drive and has been in Tinley Park for 45 years. They currently have four employees. Please join me in welcoming Phil Herman of Herman's Auto Center.
Good evening, and thank you for having us here tonight. Thanks for coming. My name is Phil Herman. I am the son of the owner Walter Herman of Herman's Auto Center. Our shop is located at 7250 Du Van Drive, which is about one block west of 175th and Harlem, right behind the old Tinley Park Health Center. We're open Monday through Friday from 8:00 to 5:00, and closed on Saturdays and Sundays. My dad's dream was to have an auto repair shop, which started as a full-service and co-gas station on 167th and Oak Park Avenue in 1976. At that time, my dad was only 20 years old, and there were 13 gas stations in the area. Since then, the shop has relocated twice within the Tinley area, and we have been at our current location for 25 years. We're a small family-owned business. Besides my dad and I, my brother Michael is another mechanic, and we are a service writer going. We do work on most makes and models and do services ranging from general maintenance and engine and transmission replacements. We take pride in offering quality, honest, and fair-priced repair service. We appreciate the support from the loyal Tinley community and the surrounding areas and hope to continue to serve them in many years to come. We are fortunate to have customers that we have grown close to over the years and consider them part of our own family. Starting out, starting out as a family business, my dad knew how important it was to build trusting relationships with his customers, and that is how we still continue to do it today. We wouldn't have made it this far without their loyalty. We would like to thank our customers for our continued success, and would like to thank the Village of Tinley Park for spotlighting Herman's Auto Center. You're welcome. Thank you.
Next, we have the Station Pub and Eatery, which is located at 6657 West South Street and has been in Tinley Park for five years. They currently have 11 employees. Please join me in welcoming Scott McKay of the Station Pub and Eatery.
Well, thank you for having us. This is a special day for us because the hard work that you guys have put forward to bring the noise down by us, we're extremely excited. I commend all of you for your hard work, and we're really excited about what the future brings. Obviously, we're, we feel we're a little hidden gem on the corner there and have waited a long time, and your hard work has paid off. We're open Tuesday through Sunday. We open 11:30 in the morning, and we're open, our bar license goes till whenever we have our last patron there, so we try to stay as late as possible. We have the full gambling operation there. We have 180 seats in our facility. We have a back area for banquets, full-service bar. We have some seating in by the casino area and the dining room. We are really excited about what's coming our way. We want to take advantage of some of the grants to make some improvements on the property, fix up our patio. We feel like we have a great space there. We want to kind of take away, so it doesn't feel like you're sitting in the street, that you're kind of more nestled in with that space that we have there. We are, we're, I can't tell you how excited we are. We've been through the COVID and all that, and we're ready for it to happen. We've got some really comfort foods on the menu. We really pride ourselves, our soups are made daily fresh. We have prime rib, which is one of our specialties, that people like the baked chicken. We have all sorts of soups, sandwiches, so you can kind of, we kind of look at our place as the neighborhood gathering spot, and there's so many great things to come. When I look out the door and I see that there's more buildings and residents and all sorts of future space that people will be renting, it's a win-win for all of us. So we really appreciate you spotlighting us. Anytime my, my wife Danielle is over at the store now, I'm here obviously today, but one of us usually tries to keep a presence there. So if anyone has questions, we'd be happy to answer those, but we really appreciate the, we've gotten a lot of support from various civic groups in the area that have been really helpful and going the extra mile, trying to order during the COVID times. I know a lot of restaurants have, have struggled with that, but we're really excited and looking to make improvements to add to the great work that you guys have provided down here. So, thank you very much.
Do you know Priscilla? She was sitting in front of you?
Yeah, I did. Talked to Priscilla. Yeah, she's been great. But thanks again for all your hard work.
She'll help you with the grant.
Yep, appreciate it very much.
Thanks, Scott, for coming.
Thank you.
Item number six, consider the following village board committee assignments. Have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
This is the, concurring with the recommendation of the President and appoint the following board committee assignments, which is listed below in your packet. Any questions from the board?
Roll call for rider number six, trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item number seven, like to ask for a motion to consider the appointment of trustee William A. Brennan to serve as President pro temp for the 2022 fiscal year.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Consider concurring with the recommendation of the President and appoint trustee William A. Brennan to serve as President pro temp for 2022 fiscal year. Is there any questions from the board? There's none. Any questions from the public? No? Thanks, Bill.
Roll call for item number seven, trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
abstain.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item number eight, like to ask for a motion to consider appointing the following individuals to the Advisory Commission on Labor and Development. Have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Any questions from the board?
I have some questions. Just to understand, you know, although, you know, I'm from a union home, I, these are all union positions, does, is this going to affect our local small businesses from being able to get contracts on, on, you know, anything that they can bid on?
No, this isn't about union, it's about skilled labor. And in the packet, it only pertains to projects that are over $750,000. So if it's a small guy and he could do, he could do a million-dollar project, well, you know, good for him.
Will they be, I mean, these are all union people that are being put on this board?
If you read the packet, this is a advisory panel that will meet with Kimberly, Dave, John Urbansky, and the developer when they come in.
So are these all union people on this, on this board?
Yes, they're part of AFL-CIO.
And you're not concerned that it'll, I mean, there are businesses that could possibly get it that are non-union? Will they not be?
It's non-binding advisory committee. They meet with them.
Thank you.
It's, they, they take no action, that's it. Any questions from the board?
Roll call for item number eight, trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
abstain.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Item number nine, like to ask for a motion to consider appointing Steve Clots as interim Fire Service Administrator effective June 2nd, 2021, until a permanent Fire Service Administrator is appointed. Have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Roll call for item number nine, trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item number 10, like to ask for a motion to consider appointing Lori Kismaka to the position of Associate Planner effective May 18th, 2021.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mike. Have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Bill. Human Resources conducted a search and received over 30 applications. Lori Kismaka was identified as the best candidate for the position. Lori has performed, performed a wide range of professional planning duties, working in municipal government. Prior to working in municipal government, Lori worked in the private sector coordinating architectural development of hotel projects. She holds degrees as a ma, as a Master of Urban Planning and Policy and a Bachelor's in Architectural Studies. Consider appointing Lori to the position of Associate Planner. Are there any questions from the board? Lori, would you like to say a couple words? Welcome to Tinley.
Hello, thank you. It's a pleasure to be able to meet the board and also to meet the faces that I did throughout the interview process. I am excited to work for the village. There are a lot of exciting projects, code amendments, developments. I look forward to contributing to the team on that. And, you know, I had chosen the career path of municipal planning because I like to help better a community, so going post-pandemic, I look forward to doing that, to engaging in the practice of planning to help better.
Great. Thanks to you, Lori.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Any questions from the public? Any questions from the board?
Roll call for rider number 10, trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries. Congratulations, Heidi. Miss you at village hall. Item number 12, consider approval of the following consent agenda items. Madam Clerk, can you please read these in?
Item A, consider requests from Good Shepherd Manor to conduct a raffle through June 28th, 2021, at the Odyssey Country Club. 19110 Regaland Avenue with the maximum value of the prize not to exceed $800. Winners will be drawn at the Odyssey Country Club. Item B, consider requests from Harold Viking Lodge, number 13, to conduct a Queen of Hearts raffle beginning May 19th, 2021, with the winner being drawn each Tuesday at the Viking Lodge, 6730 175th Street. Item C, consider requests for a block party permit on Saturday, July 24th, 2021, on 176th Place between 6841 and 6933 from 12:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Item D, consider requests for a block party permit on Saturday, July 31st, 2021, on Cherry Hill Avenue between 8400 and 8500 from 3:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Item E, consider requests from St. Jude Runners Association to conduct a tag day fundraiser on Saturday, May 29th and June 26th, 2020, at certain intersections in the Village of Tinley Park. And lastly, item F, consider payments for standing bills in the amount of $2,373,722.59 as listed on the vendor board approval report dated May 7th and May 14th, 2021.
Thank you. Would anyone from the board like to remove any of these items? Anyone from the public like to comment? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
I'll make the motion.
Have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, you call the roll, please.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item 13, trustee Brady.
Yes, I'd like to have the board consider adopting Resolution 2021-R-039, opposing Senate Bill 2021.
Even it out, bookends. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Any questions from the board? Any from the public?
Roll call for item 10, I'm sorry, roll call for item number 11, trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries, congratulations, Heidi, miss you at Village Hall. Item number 12, consider approval of the following consent agenda items. Madam Clerk, can you please read these in?
Item A, consider requests from Good Shepherd Manor to conduct a raffle through June 28th, 2021, at the Odyssey Country Club. 19110 Regaland Avenue, with the maximum value of the prize not to exceed $800. Winners will be drawn at the Odyssey Country Club. Item B, consider requests from Harold Viking Lodge #13 to conduct a Queen of Hearts raffle beginning May 19th, 2021, with the winner being drawn each Tuesday at the Viking Lodge, 6730 175th Street. Item C, consider requests for a block party permit on Saturday, July 24th, 2021, on 176th Place, between 6841 and 6933, from 12:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Item D, consider requests for a block party permit on Saturday, July 31st, 2021, on Cherry Hill Avenue, between 8400 and 8500, from 3:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Item E, consider requests from St. Jude Runners Association to conduct a Tag Day fundraiser on Saturday, May 29th and June 26th, 2020, at certain intersections in the Village of Tinley Park. And lastly, item F, consider payments for standing bills in the amount of $2,373,722.59 as listed on the vendor board approval report, dated May 7th and May 14th, 2021.
Thank you. Would anyone from the board like to remove any of these items? Anyone from the public like to comment? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
I'll make the motion.
You have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, you call the roll, please?
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Item 13, trustee Brady.
Yes, I'd like to hear the board consider adopting Resolution 2021-R-039, opposing Senate Bill 2298, amending the Tax Increment Allocation Development, Redevelopment Act of the Illinois Municipal Code.
Have a second?
This Act amends and significantly modifies the Tax Increment Allocation Redevelopment, the ACT, TIF Act, which will critically impair the ability to use TIF as an economic development tool in Tinley Park and across the state of Illinois. The most impactful modifications are the termination of blighted and conservation areas that will make designating a TIF area difficult. The bill also reduces the allowableability life of a TIF district from 23 years to 10 years, which decreases the municipality's ability to have a realistic timeline to plan and execute the redevelopment plan. Both modifications to the TIF Act are detrimental to the use of TIF to restore viability in economically distressed areas in Illinois, as well as in Tinley Park in the future. This item was discussed at the Committee of the Whole held prior to this meeting. This resolution is eligible for adoption.
Thank you, Bill. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Anyone from the board care to comment?
Just a question, did they, is there any information of why they're pushing for this? What the reasoning is?
Well, I think there's always pushes from, you know, various groups to, to limit TIFs, but this would be, this would really make a lot of development impossible if it was at, at the 10-year level.
Is that why somebody, why they're pushing? I don't get that either. Like what is, what benefits do they have by trying to push this?
Well, I mean, I think what, what it will do, it will be reduce the amount of projects that will be funded through TIF. I mean, 10 years is just not realistic. So it's, I, yeah, I, it's, I think there's, there's always a group, developers or sometimes other school districts that, that pushes, but this is, especially nowadays, I think coming out of COVID, having something like this would really hamper our TIF districts immensely.
Thanks, Dave. Anyone from the public here to comment?
Well, this, this won't affect any of our current TIFs, right? I think we have seven going on. So if we do decide to do a TIF later on and they change this, it's going to affect us, but.
It would be protracted. I would point out that, you know, where this limits it to, to 10 years, you know, we experienced that with the Bay Street South TIF. When it, when we finally got, got past the recession and were in a recovery stage, we only had eight years left on that TIF. And we did projections and determined that it would not produce enough increment to be able to support the needs of, of, for, for new development to occur. So if this, if this legislation limited you to 10 years, you'd have to have a project that was ready to go the instant that thing was approved.
And Ben?
Almost begs the question whether the TIF is needed.
Ben, you'll have to wait till public comment because of the, thank you. Thanks, Brad.
So 23 years makes sense, not 10.
23 years makes absolute sense.
It's been tried and true, obviously, in the past.
I, I will say from our own experience, 23 years, with the Oak Park Avenue TIF, which was a highly successful TIF, we need it all 23 years to make it work.
Can I ask another question?
Go ahead.
So it's, it would then, so they're probably looking at it that the, the money's going to go flip back to get back to the schools and back fund it into the general fund.
All, all of the taxing districts. It basically is just saying you can't have a TIF and everybody gets, gets their normal distribution of taxes.
Andrew, do you want to add something?
Yeah, I think just back to trustee Sullivan and trustee Mike's question about maybe some of the motivation. A lot of TIFs aren't as successful as the TIFs that have, have come about in Tinley Park, and Oak Park Avenue is one of the most successful TIFs that ever existed, and created a lot of increment for those school districts and other taxing bodies, where these TIFs sometimes fail, and these school districts and others don't see the benefit of what that original projection is. So sometimes their TIFs get a bad name because they're not run properly and operated properly. And fortunately for, for Tinley Park, that's happened from, from predecessors that were on the dais and also in the vice front. So it's, it's why we've got such a great relationship with our school districts, and they push us to do these types of developments, because they've seen the results.
And just to add to that, Brad, a perfect examples, with yourself, former Mayor Zabrocki, and Seaman, and former Clerk Ray, and the board, what they did with the convention center TIF. I mean, how much money you put back into the community, which wouldn't have been built there through infrastructure and everything else. Right?
I doubt, I doubt if any, any of that that exists today would, would be here today if the TIF did not exist.
Thank you.
Roll call for item number 13, trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Item 14, trustee Brady.
Yes, like to the board consider adopting Resolution 2021-R-033, supporting the restoration of Local Government Distribution Fund, LGDF.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Go ahead, Bill.
State of Illinois has maintained a long-held agreement with municipalities to support and invest in local services through the Local Government Distribution Fund. The LGDF includes the collection and distribution of tax revenues on behalf of the municipalities. The state government has shared a percentage of the total tax income collections through the LGDF with municipalities on a per capita basis in lieu of local income tax. Municipalities depend upon the LGDF, dollars which can account between 10% and 20% of their operating budget. The governor has proposed, the fiscal year of 2022, state budget include a further 10% reduction in the amount of LGF revenue distributed to local governments. The resolution urges the General Assembly and the governor to restore the LGDF payments to the promised 10% rate, so communities across Illinois may provide basic levels of service and lessen their reliance upon property taxes. This item was discussed at the Committee of the Whole prior to this meeting, and this resolution is eligible for adoption this evening.
Thanks, Bill. Anyone from the board have any questions? Anyone from the public?
Roll call for item number 14, trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Item 15, trustee Mueller.
I move we postpone ordinance 2021-O-017, granting the variation for minimum apartment size at 6732 173rd Street to our June 1st meeting here in two weeks.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Anyone from the board care to comment?
Just out of curiosity, why we're, it looked like they had fixed all their issues on a meeting I was.
Sure, we are working towards some of those items. There's still a couple of other issues we're trying to resolve that would hold this case back, so one of them being in communication with the fire department currently, and we're looking to get those items addressed and therefore it could move forward, so, thank you.
Thank you, Kimberly.
Thanks.
Roll call for item number 15, motion to postpone, trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Item 16, trustee Mueller.
I move we consider ordinance 2021-O-023, approving the annexation of a parcel of property commonly located at 6864 179th Street.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mike.
The petitioner, Maria Pulos, Pulos, sorry, on behalf of MAKP Properties, Inc., has petitioned the Village of Tinley Park to annex approximately 28,552 square feet of property located at 6864 179th Street in unincorporated Cook County. The annexation will include the adjacent 179th Street right-of-way. This ordinance is eligible for first reading tonight.
Thanks, Mike. Any questions from the board?
Just, only question is, is there anybody living around there that's got any issues?
The issues that we were made aware of were mostly due to parking on the street, and the ask was if the village could prohibit parking on that, that street, on 179th Street. The direction that we would have to take in order for that to happen would be to take it to a safety committee and, and have that conversation, whether or not we're going to prohibit parking on either one side or, or the other. That, it was the majority of the concerns that I believe that were raised.
Those were via email to the, to staff, right?
Correct.
And behind that property is a pond, too, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And why did they want to annex this property?
It's unincorporated.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Want to incorporate in Tinley.
Okay.
To be in Tinley so they can get to their services.
Yeah.
So this is just one person, that's, it's not a subdivision, just one person petitioning?
No, it's a, it's a townhome project.
Okay.
They have frontage on 179th Street, as well as property on Oak Park Avenue, so this particular piece was just the only parcel unincorporated. So therefore, to build their project, they're annexing in, following our zoning code, and will be using our services and be making improvements to the lot.
Okay.
So it's complimentary to, to the east, where we have the Union Townhome Project, and again, it's on, on the periphery of our, our legacy district, but we feel it's a nice infill development and kind of complementing the area.
So is this on the west side of Oak Park Avenue?
Yes.
I can picture 6800.
Sure, yeah.
I should have mapped this, but I didn't.
Yeah, and, yeah, so it's on the west side of.
Oak Park Avenue and then 179th Street is the.
Okay.
And it's on the north side of the street, so behind there is the ponds.
Okay, all right.
That's why they're recommending when we get to item 18, because of the ponds.
Okay, thank you.
They just keep building, building.
Roll call for item number 16, trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Item 17, trustee Mueller.
I move we consider ordinance 2021-O-024, granting a map amendment for property located at 6864 and 6900 179th Street to R6 Medium Density Residential.
Thanks, Mike. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thanks, Bill. Go ahead, Mike.
So this is a companion ordinance for item number 16, to establish the zoning. The Plan Commission held a public hearing on April 15th, 2021, and voted 7 to 0 to recommend the approval of the map amendment, in ordinance with the plans, conditions, and findings of fact listed in the staff report. This is only eligible for first reading tonight.
Thanks, Mike. Any questions from the board?
Roll call for item number 17, trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number 18, trustee Mueller.
I move we consider ordinance number 2021-O-025, granting a rear yard setback variation at 17870 and 17881, Argos Court for Sunset Estates.
Thanks, Mike. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Dennis. Go ahead, Mike.
The petitioner on behalf of MAKP Properties is requesting variation to permit rear yard setbacks ranging from 13.59 feet to 15.12 feet within a 30-yard, 30-foot rear yard setback, where a 30-foot rear yard setback is required. This will allow for the construction of two townhome structures in the proposed Sunset Estates subdivision. Plan Commission held a public hearing on April 15th, 2021, and voted 7 to 0 to recommend approval of the variation in accordance with the plans, conditions, and findings of fact listed in the staff report. This is eligible for first reading tonight.
Thanks, Mike. Any questions from the board?
Roll call for item number 18, trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Item 19, trustee Mueller, you're up.
I move we consider ordinance 2021-R-026, approving and accepting a final plat subdivision for Sunset Estates at 6864 and 6900 179th Street.
Second? Second? Thanks, Dennis. Go ahead, Mike.
So the petitioner on behalf of MAKP Properties has requested final plat approval for the Sunset Estates located at 6864 and 6900 179th Street for property totaling approximately 4,000, nine, sorry, 49,362 square feet. The Plan Commission reviewed the final plat of re-subdivision at the April 15th, 2021 meeting with a recommendation of approval conditioned upon the final engineering approval by the Village engineer with a vote of 7 to 0. This is eligible for first reading tonight.
Thanks, Mike. Any questions from the board?
Roll call for item 19, trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Item number 20, trustee Mueller.
I move we consider adopting ordinance 2021-O-032, granting drive aisle width and side yard setback variations for property located at 7613 159th Street.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thanks, Bill. Go ahead, Mike.
The petitioner, Brittany Maddox, on behalf of National Veterinary Associates, Association, Associates, is requesting a variation of 5.5 feet from the required aisle width of 26 feet to allow for a reduced aisle width of 20.5 feet for a portion of the parking lot drive aisle, and a variation of .19 feet from the required 10-foot set, 10-foot side yard setback to allow for a setback of 9.81 feet on the east side of the property. The approval of these variations will allow the construction of a 400-square-foot addition on the north side of the existing building located at 7613 159th Street. The Plan Commission held a public hearing on May 6th, 2021, and voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval of the variations in accordance with the plans, conditions, and findings of fact listed in the staff report. This ordinance is eligible for adoption.
Thanks, Mike. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public?
Roll call for item 20, trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 21, trustee Mueller.
I move we consider adopting Resolution 2021-R-036, authorizing a non-exclusive license agreement for the 80th Avenue train station with HARP 80th Avenue Tenant LLC.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Bill. Go ahead, Mike.
The resolution for consideration will allow HARP 80th Avenue Tenant LLC to license the available space at the 80th Avenue train station for five years. Highlights of the license agreements are as follows. First three months are free, and then a base monthly license fee of $1,500, plus a percentage of gross sales equal to 2.5% a year. HARP 80th Avenue Tenant LLC plans to provide services to commuters, such as coffee, breakfast, and lunch items. In addition, they will host private and public events throughout the year.[1649.71] In addition, they will host private and public events throughout the year. This item was discussed at the committee of the whole meeting held prior to this meeting. This resolution is eligible for adoption tonight.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public?
Roll call for item number twenty-one, trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item twenty-two, trustee Mueller.
I move we consider adopting ordinance twenty twenty-one dash O dash zero two seven approving a second amendment to the economic incentive agreement between the Village of Tinley Park and Bangin Gavel Properties LLC.
Second?
A second.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mike.
Thanks, Diane. Bangin Gavel LLC is requesting a second amendment to their economic incentive agreement. With the patio work nearly completed, the owners are requesting from the village use of their outdoor patio from May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one to November first, twenty twenty-one for a beer garden with a brew pub operational. The owners see an opportunity to provide a temporary outdoor experience that will be inviting and safe while the pandemic continues. A site plan and operation summary has been provided for the proposed beer garden and are exhibits to this agreement. The beer garden will be required to have meals available during hours of operation and they must comply with all village regulations. The new date for completion of the brew pub has been extended to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, of which this agreement will terminate. The item was discussed at the committee of the whole meeting held prior to this meeting, and this ordinance is eligible for adoption tonight.
Thanks, Mike. So we'll be approving what we approved at the COW?
That's correct.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public?
No, Mike, real quick, I would just uh, I mean, this is eighteen months off. I don't know, it's uh, it's a long time. Do you guys have a, a request, like a, a finish date for construction yet? Is that?
Unfortunately with the pandemic.
Yeah, please, would you?
Unfortunately with the pandemic, we've basically been stalled with the banks from a financing perspective. And until we have financing in place, we can't even begin the internal, inside of the building construction. And the banks, um, I've met with five banks in the last three months. Every single one of them has either said no, never. Three of them have said, no, not right now. Hopefully, talk to us when we get to phase five. The Illinois plan of recovery from the pandemic, so. At this point, we don't have a great timeline to be able to give. Um, I mean, we're doing stuff every day. If you drive by, you'll see that there's stuff happening. We're doing whatever we can. But it's just an extremely expensive project. The intention is if we have the beer garden open, we have the ability to generate some revenue and keep things moving.
Okay. Yeah, no, I've seen some activity over there. I just, you know, just seems like a long time, eighteen months is.
It's just a deadline. Hopefully, hopefully when they open back up, you know, your phone rings off the hook.
Yeah. Okay, alright, very good.
And then so you're, like, what's in there, what Kimberly put in there, you know, this is the one-time use to.
Yeah, we, we read the, we.
Just to make sure. Thanks, Bill.
Very good.
Anyone else from the public here to comment?
So we'll call for item twenty-two, trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Item number tw- twenty-three, trustee Mueller.
I move we consider resolution twenty twenty-one dash R dash zero three four authorizing the execution of a tax increment financing redevelopment agreement within the one hundred and fifty-ninth and Harlem Tiff District between the Village of Tinley Park and J M W Properties LLC for a property located at seven zero six one and seven zero six three, one hundred fifty-ninth Street.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Bill. Go ahead, Mike.
J M W Properties LLC is requesting the village provide economic assistance to make improvements to their shopping center. The proposed incentive consists of sharing up to nine hundred and sixty thousand of Tiff incremental revenue produced by this site alone. The village proposes to share seventy-five percent of the Tiff increment produced for a maximum of ten years to reimburse the eligible costs with conditions outlined in the draft agreement. So this is only eligible for first reading, and I know we gave quite a bit of direction to staff during the COW, so are you comfortable with that before we move to June first?
Correct. The uh, items that need to be addressed prior to adoption would be language on the clawback in the event there's a vacancy and then the uh, percentage on the project cost must be finalized in the agreement.
Perfect. Thank you, Kimberly.
Any other questions from the board?
Roll call for item number twenty-three, trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries. Here's the tough item, number twenty-four. Trustee Mueller.
My last item. I move we consider adopting resolution twenty twenty-one dash R dash zero three five authorizing a professional services agreement with GovTemp USA for provision of planning consultant.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Planning manager Paula Walrick is set to retire from this position on May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one as a gov HR employee working for the village. It is recommended that the village enter a new professional services agreement with gov HR to hire Paula as a planning consultant to provide some continuity with projects. The agreement establishes Paula's services as planning consultant through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one at a rate of pay of seventy-seven dollars and forty-nine cents per hour. The actual rate paid to Mrs. Walrick will be fifty-five dollars and thirty-five cents per hour. The number of hours per week will vary based on project needs. Employee will be paid for only hours worked. That won't be a problem with Paula. This item was discussed at the committee of a whole held prior to this meeting, and it's eligible for adoption tonight.
Anyone from the board care to comment? Yeah, life around here will not be the same. Anyone from the public care to comment? Would you like to comment?
Thanks, Paula.
It's good to be back in the office. I haven't been here in over a year, so it feels a little, a little eerie, but uh, I just wanted to take a few moments. I thought it would be appropriate tonight since you had looked at my contract, and I am retiring, and I have to tell you it's a tough decision, but it's the right decision. And um, I'm here and I'm going to be available for Kimberly or anyone to help out as you need, but my regular office hours will be done by the end of the month. But I wanted to make sure that I express my gratitude to Mayor Glatz and the leadership in village, uh, the residents and the staff and the administration of Tinley Park. It's been a humbling experience uh, working for the village, and I feel very, very fortunate that I get to end my career here at Tinley Park. I'm one of those lucky people that just loves their job. Uh, maybe many of you do, but I, I've always loved community development and planning especially. And to be able to finish here in the Village of Tinley Park means, I'm, I'm getting emotional about it, means a lot to me. So um, when I think of all the people I want to thank, I really want to start with Mayor Michael Glatz and uh, his leadership. I met Mike um, when he was first a trustee and he was assigned to community development, brand new, and uh, his enthusiasm and passion for that job just blew me away. I've worked with a lot of trustees. I've been in this for forty years, so I've worked with a lot of great people. But Mike came into the office and it was a tumultuous time. I'm sure our administrator can attest to that. Um, it was kind of a crazy time and we were all wearing a lot, a lot of hats, and I was uh, the community development director at that time. And Mike came in with so much energy and inquisitiveness about things as boring as zoning to some of you people. And I was, I was so impressed that he didn't just want to learn about it, he just kept asking me, how do, how do we make sure that we're doing the right thing? And we had some lively debates, if you remember, and um, what I really admired about him is that we didn't always agree. Quite a few times we didn't agree. And he would listen to me and he would ask my professional opinion and he would ask why I should be listening or why he should be listening to me, and sometimes I was able to change his mind. And so I, I find that very refreshing, an elected official, um, to be open to the staff, especially um, those of us that, you know, just love what we do. And so I thank you for that. And um, when I think about the ability and the opportunity that this village has given me, I feel, those of you that know, I've gotten on my soapbox before, public services is an awesome responsibility. Um, when you think of what these residents have done by electing you and they, they put their faith in you to do the right thing, to protect them in many ways, their businesses, as we heard some of these great businesses tonight, as well as their personal livelihood, their, some of their biggest investment is in their home, and that's our job to protect that. And I think um, especially here in Tinley Park, I've been so impressed by what I've witnessed through the leadership and what I've witnessed in staff, that it's been humbling. And so I thank you for the opportunity, again, to allow me to work for you, and the fact that I've enjoyed it has made it even easier. I also want to thank staff. I mean, I, I believe you realize this, and I know there's some new trustees that, that I don't know that well, but what an awesome staff you have here. I, from the very first day I came in here, and I just came in to, what, come in and help out a little bit. Um, they've, they've been so professional, hardworking. I mean, the hours these people put in. But more importantly, what I experienced is the kindness that I felt from, from everybody. I mean, I was a new person here and they took time to show me the ropes and um, be supportive, you know, not this sort of competitiveness environment. They were, they were genuinely interested in making sure that I could do a good job, and I thank you all very much for that. When I think about the community development staff in particular, it does get emotional for me because it's a family back there. They are, they are a tight group, and when I was put in positions that were, you know, pretty much brand new and trying to help, help out, I could not have done it without the staff that was back there. They're like a well-oiled machine. They know what they need to do. Um, I was there just kind of keeping it afloat sometimes, so they, again, I'm going to miss them very much. They're a great staff. And they're in great hands with Kimberly. She's going to do a good job for you, and um, we have a new, I don't know if she's still here, but the new employee I'm real excited about. I think she's going to do a great job too. So, thank you for allowing me to finish my career here and finish on a high note, and I'm, I'm very um, thankful for having worked with all of you. Thank you.
Hey Paula, could you come up here with the board? Donna Wetton got this for you.
It's no match for your garden.
Board, you guys want to take a picture with Paula?
I told you, these people are terrific here. Holy Moses. Killing me. First time I've worn makeup in a year.
Anybody else getting on this? Oh, it's a nice picture. Sorry. Ready?
Thank you.
Great picture.
And I got you something too. All those kind words, you have to pay yourself that.
Thank you.
Donna, can I use your phone to take a picture with Paula and staff?
Sure.
Oh my lord, this, you guys are making this tough. It's really, really, really tough. Congratulations. It's very nice to meet you. You guys are going to love doing this. This is a great job.
You have to wait, sure, that's fine.
You have to get a little closer together.
You go first. Phil will go first.
Alright, one, two. Ready for it? We'll do a COW. Go.
Thank you all very, very much.
Thank you, Paula. Thank you, Paula.
You gotta remodel this place.
Any comments from the public?
Roll call for item number twenty-four, trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item twenty-five. Like to ask for a motion to consider adopting ordinance two zero two one dash O dash zero two nine increasing the number of class N liquor licenses that can be issued in the village. Hampton Inn located at one eighty-five oh one North Creek Drive. Have a motion.
So moved?
Second.
Thank you. Hampton Inn located at one eighty-five oh one North Creek Drive is seeking a class N liquor license. A class N liquor license authorizes a hotel to serve beer and wine on the premises. In addition to operate a pantry selling packaged beer and wine for guests staying at the hotel. Hampton Inn currently has a convenience shop that sells items such as pop, water, candy, chips, et cetera, in hopes to add beer and wine sales as an added convenience to hotel guests. This item was discussed at the committee of the whole prior to this meeting. This ordinance is eligible for adoption. Thanks, Paula. You got my voice all cracky now. Anyone from the board have any comments? Questions? Anyone from the public?
Roll call for item number twenty-five, trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number twenty-six, I would like to ask for a motion to consider adopting ordinance two zero two one dash O dash zero two eight increasing the number of class N liquor licenses that can be issued in the village, Even Hotel located at one eighty-five oh one Convention Center Drive.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Second?
Thank you. Even Hotel located at one eighty-five oh one Convention Center Drive is seeking a class N liquor license. A class N liquor license authorize hotels serve beer and wine on the premises. In addition to operate a pantry selling packaged beer and wine for guests staying at the hotel. Even Hotel currently operates an onsite restaurant and hopes to add beer and wine sales as an added convenience to the hotel guests. This item was discussed at the committee of the whole prior to this meeting. This ordinance is eligible for adoption. Any questions from the board? Anyone from the public?
Roll call for item number twenty-six, trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number twenty-seven, trustee Brennan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to consider adopting resolution twenty twenty-one dash R dash zero three zero between the Tinley Park Police Sergeants and the Village of Tinley Park.
Have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Mike.
Go ahead, Bill.
The village has been renegotiating an agreement with the sergeants that was last approved in twenty eighteen. In this agreement, the sergeant's wage increase will continue to be at a twenty percent differential above the top base salary of a patrol officer. Administrative days off are restored to their previous level, which is three days. Language was also added to clarify overtime assignments. This agreement is for a four-year agreement and expires on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. This resolution is eligible for adoption.
Thanks, Bill. Anyone from the board? Any comments? Anyone from the public?
Roll call for item number twenty-seven, trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item twenty-eight, trustee Mahoney, you're up.
Thanks, Mike. Consider adopting resolution two zero two one dash R dash zero three seven authorizing the village manager's authority to contract for the purchase of electricity street lighting accounts.
Do we have a motion? I make a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Go ahead, Dennis.
The village participates in a consortium with one hundred and fifty other municipalities known as the Northern Illinois Municipal Electric Collaborative, N I M E C, to collectively obtain pricing for residential and municipal electricity. N I, N I M E C will be holding a group bid for street lighting accounts on June eighth, two thousand twenty-one. As with the previous electrical agreements, the window of opportunity for this, for the village to sign agreements and to take advantage of the lowest bidder is typically limited to less than forty-eight hours. As such, the village will need to authorize the village manager to sign a third-party agreement upon completion of the competitive, competitive bidding process. This will aid in assuring that the village continues to be afforded the best possible electrical rates. This was discussed at the committee of the whole held prior to this meeting. This resolution is eligible for adoption.
Thank you, Dennis. Anyone from the board have any comments? Anyone from the public?
Roll call for item number twenty-eight, trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Item twenty-nine. Receive litigation update. That could be you, Tom or Pat? Tom?
Good evening.
So I, I was asked to come down here and talk about the status of the eminent domain uh, cases currently pending our sixty-seven oh six, sixty-seven twelve, and sixty-seven twenty-four North Street. Some of you may know that those cases were.
Can you lift the microphone?
Sorry, thanks.
It's the first time anyone said they couldn't hear me. They were uh, they were assigned in a, they got reassigned to a judge, Judge Duffy. Judge Duffy recused himself last week, got sent to Judge Flannery for reassignment. There is a pending matter on a foreclosure of sixty, uh, related to sixty-seven oh six, uh, where the village is named as a party just before Judge Cleary. We're petitioning. We're petitioning Judge Flannery to assign that so that all of the cases now proceed before Judge Cleary and run tandem with the foreclosure action which was filed against, by HSBC, to foreclose on the property for failure to pay the mortgage. So we're trying to put all, get, hopefully get those all back. We thought we had before the judge recused himself last week. So, that's where we're at. We anticipate, that's, the 6706 case is up on June 1st. So on June 1st, we should have a better understanding of timing if the case is gonna go to Judge Cleary. And if so, how that's, what the timing is gonna be.
Thanks, can you notify Dave after that?
Yes, I will.
Thank you. Thanks, Tom.
Welcome.
Thank you, Tom.
Any questions for Tom on the properties mentioned? Well, we'll move on. Well, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Item number 30. Receive comments from staff. Dave, you got your hand up?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Glott. Just like to put in my short thanks for Paula. So, some of you may know this, but Paula and I go way back. So, 30 years ago, we worked in a neighboring community together. We were both young and a little naive, but hey, we're still there. So, and it was really, I think, fortunate for us, I think in 2015, when you came back. Again, what we thought was gonna be, just help us out a little bit. And, and then things got crazy a little after that. And Paula did agree to take on the Acting Community Development Director position. And it was, it was really, we were very grateful because, and I think Paula knows this, because our Plan B was, there was no Plan B. So, it was a difficult time, frankly, a lot of professionals would not wanna, wanna step into. And so, I'm not sure how that year or the next couple of years would've gone if she didn't do that. But really, thank you, thank you for, you know, for what you did for the Village and our long friendship. And best of luck in retirement, so.
Anybody else from staff? Go ahead, Chief.
I just wanna take a moment. I wanna recognize Hannah and Angela for putting together the police test. They had to put the posting out. They had to correspond with all the candidates. They had to set up the orientation dates, split them in two so that we didn't have too many people due to COVID, and secure the testing site. I also wanna thank them, Hannah, Angela, Trustee Brady, Commissioner, Civil Service Commissioners Moore and Ashmore, Patricia Pulis, who came out and spoke on behalf of what it's like to be the spouse of an officer, Laura Sanchez, and what it's like to be an officer, especially a female officer. Commander Pulis for talking to the recruits as well. They did a great job. We had 43 applicants. It went, it went very well. So I just wanted to take time to thank them.
Thank you. Anyone else from staff? Go ahead, Donna.
Sure, if I may, just a couple of quick things with you. We met with Park District today. They are moving ahead with their 4th of July celebration this year. They'll be doing the race in the morning. They're also gonna be doing a band, starting at 6:30 PM, and then moving on to the fireworks. And then also, we have the Memorial Day Ceremony scheduled for May 31st out at Veterans Plaza. That'll start at 10 AM. And it's, of course, in coordination with the Veterans Commission. And also, our benches went out this week. And hopefully, you've had a chance to see them. But it's a great time of the year when the street just comes alive, so. Getting back to normal.
Thanks, Donna.
Thank you, Donna.
Anyone else from staff? We'll move on to item number 31. Receive comments from the board. I would just like to add to what Dave was saying. Back when I was the liaison for Paula, we were short many different employees in that department. And you were a Department of One for planners and everything else. And I remember working out of town and my, my emails dinging. And it's Paula at 1:00, 2:00 in the morning, still at work. As, and it's just amazing what you've done. You were supposed to, I think, do it for three months and it turned into, to that position to what? Two or three years?
Who's telling?
I mean, as the Community Development Director. And then last, I would like to have a special birthday wish I'd like to make today. I'd like to wish, Brad may know who I'm talking about, and I know Laura does. I'd like to wish longtime Deputy Clerk Shirley Schwartz a happy 90th birthday. Shirley worked for the Village for over 40 years. And then she worked part-time until she was 70. Best wishes Shirley, and thanks for all the years of service to Tinley on your 90th birthday. Happy birthday. Anything you wanna add to that, Brad?
No.
Okay.
I'm happy to recognize that her 90th birthday, you're a great person to work with over the years. And I wish her all the best.
Thanks, Brad. Anyone else from the board?
Mike, I wish you would comment about what happened on Saturday with the Veterans Commission.
It was, it was absolutely-
For Armed Forces Day. You could report on that.
Oh, thanks, yeah. It was absolutely outstanding. Public Works and Marketing did a phenomenal job putting that together for us. Even with the rain, they put it, set up the tents. And it was a, we had a great luncheon afterwards. And some of the speakers, Bill, I wish you could've been there. I, I think it's the first person, I think, that spoke louder than you do.
Okay.
So, thanks.
Okay. Wish I could've been there, but had commitments out of town.
I have a comment.
Sure.
Paula, first, I want to say thank you. The legacy code, I really got to understand that. And you coming in when I was part of UCC and really did help. It's been great working with you. Appreciate everything you've done for our town. I also need to clear up some misconceptions. I wanna make it very clear that I work for the people of this, this town. My actions have always been in the best interest of the taxpayers, and I believe it is what they expect from me. Yes, I have been questioning the non-value cost to the taxpayers. Legal spending is high on my list. I've asked to set up tracking for projects and pushed for regular reporting on open cases. We should not be spending exorbitant costs over what the claim is for. I disagree with the past Board's direction to staff to not settle cases, period. It's fiscally irresponsible. We do not stop putting, we need to stop putting personal pride over doing what is right for this Village. As Board members, we should not be holding up cases for any reason, increasing the cost to the taxpayers. And then, in response to some social media posts and some statements made here at the Board, I have had nothing to do with Bill Brennan's work being contacted, nor do I know anything what its regards to. I do not feed out public information from executive session to harm the taxpayers. I took appropriate steps up the chain of command after I was pulled into a lie by the then-Trustee Glotz. And I wanted to make my statement, documented it, to keep me from getting pulled into a future lawsuit I expected to happen. It was completely inappropriate. I am not on social media spinning tales against others. I documented my statements and I signed it as the truth that it is. I ran for this position to work for the taxpayers. And I was, I have never strayed from that. I disagree with the ongoing attempts to damage reputations of others serving in this town. It serves no purpose and it only hurts this town. And I, I just wanna say, I'm sure that Trustee Sullivan is gonna do an amazing job as the new Finance Chair. I just hope that you continue the work that I tried to start in, in doing the reporting and getting more information out to the taxpayers. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else from the board here to comment?
No, I'd just say, Paula, you said you were lucky to love what you did. We were lucky to have you. So thanks so much for all your hard work and expertise you brought to us. So, thank you so much.
Item 32. Receive comments from the public. Anyone care to address the Board? Can you hold on one second?
Hello, everyone. My name is Joe Galante. A few of you know me. One of you seems a bit obsessed even, for reasons that are beyond me. I'm here with regards to a Facebook post made by the mayor. It reads, and I quote, "Diane Hines-Galante, lol. The ones you asked to write for you because you can't stay on topic or go off on 10 different tangents. I would think you would be thankful for helping you articulate your comments. You asked for help and I gave it to you. Now that's bad, lol. I remember." End quote. My mom didn't help for, ask for help, sir. And since, as you claim, my mom is apparently unable to articulate her thoughts, we're in luck I'm at the mic because I happen to be more than capable. Now, I'd like to say, I don't even know who Steve Eberhart is, and frankly, I could care less. But what I do know is that Mr. Glotz made a false claim stating that Mr. Eberhart had stalked his wife. He told my mom that it was a flat-out lie. I'm not sure if that really damaged the guy's reputation coming from you, but regardless, it was a classless move. Moving on, a little story time. When I was 18 years old, I made the mistake of accepting some shots of Poochin. For those of you that don't know what that is, it's like Everclear. I instantly blacked out. And I went and broke a window outside of Village Coins by Jet's Pizza. It was the worst day of my life. No one caught me, and I didn't even know I did it until my mom stormed into my room and made it very clear that I had. I immediately went and offered to pay for the damages, and the owner said it would be $1,000. He said he didn't wanna get me in trouble because he understood I meant no harm and I simply made a terrible mistake. I thanked him repeatedly for not pressing charges on me, and I was going to pay him the next day. When the next day rolled around, though, the other owner of the building demanded I pay 15 grand for the window, or he would send me to jail. At that point, I just went and turned myself into the police station. The reason I bring this story up is because every time my mom questions any financial issues in this meeting, I am somehow brought into this. The mayor threatens to expose my issues. First, he had his friend post on Facebook that I'm a burglar. And then I went, and then he went to the police station and got my police report. And then he had his friend post my mugshot on Facebook. I actually counted a total of 13 posts, some of which you actually liked yourself. Thank you for that. And after this meeting, I'm sure you're gonna go and dig up something else to post about me. But before you do, let me articulate my point. My job, my mom is simply doing her job. She's going to continue to question spending because she's an accountant. She treats this like a business. If there's a way to do the job more efficiently, she's going to look into it. I'm sure you'd rather her turn a blind eye. And honestly, I wish she would. But I can promise you, she will not. The fact that you go out of your way to ruin my reputation is absolutely absurd to me. I'm not a robber or a thug like you make me out to be. I'm an honor student studying economics. And I want you to please understand that I made a horrible mistake and I've paid for it a thousand times already. And I'd really appreciate it if you didn't make me pay anymore. This Board is quite literally filled with middle school drama.
Your time is up. Thank you, sir.
I was just getting to the best part, but I ask you all to stay open-minded.
Thank you, Joe. Joe, you could read his, yes. Can he have asked extra time?
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
That was excellent.
Can you, Joe, can you, you have to come, you have to come up to the mic, sir. Hold on, excuse me, sir. You're out of order. You have to come to the mic, please.
He has a medical issue. You can't make an exception for that?
What is the medical, I don't know. Go, stay there, Joe.
Paula talks about how when you were a young man in this position, and you asked a lot of questions. And she worked with you, and guys had arguments and this and that. It sure sounds like it was a wonderful experience. And I don't understand, my wife, my wife can't have that same wonderful experience. That every time she asks a question, she gets persecuted. And, I mean, really, Paula, isn't that, I mean, sounds like a wonderful thing. I'm like, why can't, why can't it be that way? Why can't you give her a break? She's just trying to do a good job. She's not trying to hurt anyone. She has no political agenda. She has no other agenda. She just wants to do the right thing for this Village. Give her a break and let her do her job. That's all, yeah. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public here to comment? Can you hold on one second, sir? Are you ready, Laura?
Good evening. I watched the Armed Forces Ceremony. I wanted to thank the Staff and the Veterans Commission for doing such a great job. I would like to welcome Colleen and Dennis to the Board. Trustee Galante, according to an affidavit you signed, you stated, "I first spoke to Mr. Eberhart regarding what I believe to be issues of concern on March 6, 2021. In this same affidavit, you stated, 'As elected official, I understand that I have an obligation to make proper responses for records pursuant to mandates of FOIA.' On April 19, 2021, I filed a FOIA asking for any communications with Steve Eberhart that included emails, text messages, meetings, phone calls, Zoom meetings, phone records, and any electronic communications with Steve Eberhart. And I received nothing back.' So you said, 'I have an obligation to make proper responses to FOIA,' so. Who typed the affidavit? Why did you sign the affidavit? Why isn't the affidavit notarized? Did you create the affidavit, or did Mr. Eberhart create the affidavit? Was, was there a draft of the affidavit that was later changed? Did you ever meet with Mr. Eberhart to create the affidavit? And lastly, what caused you to team up with Mr. Eberhart? Can I get some Jeopardy music, maybe? Thank you.
Anyone else here to address the Board? Can you hold on one second? Are you ready? Okay.
Good evening. At the December 1st, 2020 Board Meeting, Trustee Mueller went through and stated, At the December 1st, 2020 Board Meeting, Trustee Mueller went through and stated on the different dates, 8/18, 9/1, and 9/15, a total of 75 pages were provided to all Board Members about the Volmer and Harlem Project, and that there were numerous meetings discussing all the details. Ms. Galante had stated at three other meetings that she wasn't receiving the same information that other Board Members were receiving, three separate times, accused Staff and Board Members of not providing to her all of the necessary information, not just about the Harlem and Volmer Project. The above dates and documentation was stayed unproven by Trustee Mueller and Glatz's statements on the- at the 12-1 meeting. After I heard this, I was a bit stunned because I didn't know. After being confronted with the information and the facts, Ms. Galante stated, and I quote, "I probably misspoke." No apology to her fellow Board Members, no apology to Staff Members for accusing them of not providing her with the information. I spoke at the 12-1 meeting once I heard the facts that were provided. A somewhat heated exchange occurred between myself and Ms. Galante after that. Beginning the evening of 12-1, 2020, after the meeting had adjourned, I was harassed by Ms. Galante for five days through text. On 12/14/20, I was in a local coffee shop, and I was approached by a member of Ms. Galante's family, and I was harassed and called derogatory names. On 12/15/20, another- actually, it was the next Board Meeting, another of Mrs. Galante's family members confronted me at the Board Meeting and accused me of attacking Ms. Galante. I thought- I actually spoke to that person for quite a while afterwards, and I thought we had come to an understanding, but I obviously was mistaken. I am being attacked, bullied, and intimidated by Ms. Galante and her family, and yet, she calls everybody else a bully. I've been contacted by a number of friends that have received texts, PMs, and phone calls saying horrible things about me. So, again, who's the bully here? We're being accused of things that she is doing and using it to deflect.
Time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you. And just before you go- before the record, Joe, just to respond to what you were saying.
Incredibly disrespectful.
Everyone's allowed to ask any questions they want, and if you remember, you also called me too and spoke to me for well over an hour, ask- and myself, and you called Ms. O'Connor, asking for help with your wife on what she's doing with the Board. And you were supposed to call back, and you never did. And so, just to get that- sir, your public comment is over on how I'm responding. And for the record, you called me, you're concerned about what she was doing, you called Ms. O'Connor, you spoke to both of us for over an hour. Ask- sir, you'll have to- you'll have to come on June 1st. Sir, you're out of order. You'll have to come on June 1st to speak again. You hold on one second? Are you ready? Go ahead.
Just somewhat embarrassing what's going on here, and it started, and I'm not blaming Bill. I think you're a great guy. I think you're awesome. I think what you're doing is good, but on September 29th, when you accused Diane and Berg of being the leakers that brought this big man up here to harass these guys-
Hold on one second. Will you please-
No, I won't.
No, no. You're out of order. Ben, you're out of order. Ben, it's the last time I'm going to tell you, or I'm going to have to ask you to leave. You have to address the Board, not the people in the audience.
I'll start again. So, when you did that, it put a big man here to go after Diane, go after Trustee Berg, and for what? And after that December 1st meeting, Heidner even said, "I don't think Diane did it." He didn't. She didn't. And you know what? It allowed these people, hey, let's go after Berg, or let's go after Diane, let's go after this guy, and then you do a Village frickin' coin deal, knowing what you knew? It's just despicable. And we should just get through this and get over it because a lot of good things going on in this Village. But all this stuff here is ridiculous, absolutely ridiculous, and I feel bad, obviously, for everybody, and I'm not against anybody. I don't have a political agenda here. I'm not going to run ever. I would just put that out there, so I've been told to run by a lot of people. There's no frickin' way that I will do this because of these people here, and the way the leaders allow it to happen. You guys could stop this stuff easily, but you flat-out blame these people for stuff that they didn't do, or they made a mistake. God forbid, your kid makes a mistake, and then it's open season on them? Frickin' ashamed. You should be ashamed, every one of you.
Anyone else care to address the Board?
We don't expose it.
Item number 33. Task for a motion adjourned to executive session to discuss the following. A, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. B, collective negotiating matters between the public body, its employees, or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. Or C, the purchase or lease of real property for the use of the public body, including meetings held for the purpose of discussing whether a particular parcel should be acquired.
I'll make that motion.
We have a second.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. We are adjourned at 9:04 PM, and we will not be coming back. Thank you.